Let's remain standing and think about our troops serving this country overseas. Great, thank you. Okay, welcome to the special meeting of the village board trustees, Tuesday, June 11th. So what we're here for today is to have a summary and a grant fund opportunity presentation by Delaware Engineering and to amend our original agreement. So if Delaware could come up and give us a summary of what we need to do.
All right, since we're so close, I won't stand.
Yeah.
Hovering over it. So as you know, you've been dealing with the issues of the wastewater plant for a while, and there are the consent order. The other factor is the CFA application, which is called like funding applications are due July 26th. And obviously, there's some funding opportunities in there for wastewater plants. And with our engagement with the D E C, and you know, kind of restarting the process of the wastewater plants, they sent us an email and said, I think it'd be a really good idea if you applied for this grant, which is the Water Quality Improvement Grant, which they are, the D E C is the group that scores the grants, right? So obviously, it's a very good idea to follow through that suggestion. And it all makes sense because we need to come up with a plan to move forward, so that we can amend the consent order. And then that same plan, the plan, when I call the plan, I mean engineering report, will be used for the grant. So this is where we're at right now. So let's do the July 26th. And you know, it's possible to get all this done because we've been into this for months, you know, studying the plant and coming up with ideas of what can be done. But we need to formalize that in a report that follows all the standards and comes with a conclusion that is the plan that's going to be forward.
And the opportunity for the savings on the grant, on the funding side, Mike, are you aware of that?
Well, anytime you get a grant, it's good. I believe there's this 25%.
There's two tiers in the WQIP. One where it's a 25% match, obviously, that's great. The other is a 60% match, so a 40% grant, 60% match. If you look strictly speaking on the criteria, you're more likely to be in the 60% match. But it all depends on score and a lot of other factors. So the other grants that you might be familiar with is the WEA grant, with the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant. Those give you 25% grant, and then the balance is your money. And then, of course, you have the bond resolution already. It's a secret type 2 action because it's, you know, improvement, existing treatment plant. So all those allow you to move fast to get this started.
So Delaware would be applying for these opportunities, these grant opportunities, with the documentation and the summary?
Correct, yeah. So our scope that we're, that's part of the amendment, is to follow through the application. There's some coordination we have to do because we have to use your grant gateway, that your grant writer has already set up for you. So we have to coordinate, obviously, and we'll do the, put together all the packages and stuff.
Right, okay.
We will tell the compelling story. Have they seen that? Remember that cheat sheet?
No.
Not for this year, except for this. No, we have a background.
So this is the cheat sheet that we use for the infrastructure grants that are out there in New York State. And on the second page, you'll see the program that Robert's talking about and some of the qualifications for that. And we will, as Robert said, put together as compelling a story as we can and advocate with all of the partners that it takes to advocate with to help you compete as well as possible. For other things that are going on here in the village, you know, some of the other programs might be useful to you. But those are just infrastructure, the kind of things that we help communities with. So there's a lot more grant programs in New York State, obviously.
Right.
But these are the infrastructure ones that we work with them typically. There's also a program called the State and Municipal Facilities Grant Program. I don't know if you've taken advantage of that, but that is...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The SAM program is a good one to take advantage of. So sometimes there's opportunities to combine the SAM with some of the other programs that Robert's talking about, and we'll evaluate that and work with your legislators and figure out if there's a way to do that. Much of the work that we do at Delaware Engineering, we try to, we find the money to do the projects.
All right.
So we'll do that in this case.
Do you have any questions for Delaware?
Yes, you mentioned, we're trying to state as good a case as we can because we're competing for this.
That's a key point. All these are very competitive.
Okay. So how many of these type of grants are they issuing, projects like this around the state? You have any idea?
Well, they have a total value of the grant amount, you know, for the given year, and then...
Seventy million.
What's that?
Seventy million is the quote.
Yes, so then divided, you know, based on the applications you get and the value of the project, so the number that gets awarded is, you know, obviously, some number less than seventy, because each project is going to run. They also try to divide regionally.
Yeah, there's a number of overlays.
Yeah.
There's a regional overlay, there's political overlays, there's...
Water quality.
There's water quality, et cetera, et cetera. So it's tough to, we could not answer your question, neither could the D E C answer your question, until they see all the applications. There are communities that may have lost last year. Usually, you know, for grant programs, sometimes you have to lose once to succeed, or lose twice to succeed, so...
Actually, that's a really good point because these are multi-year programs, and obviously, your project is a multi-year project. So applying this year is going to let you, you know, if needed, reapply next year and the year after.
Yeah.
Do we get deadlines in July, and they usually announce...
December.
November, December would be the time we'd find out. But we'll work with D E C. We work with the D E C regional people, we have very good relationships there. We'll work with them, try to get as much advocacy as possible for the project.
If we get a grant this year, would we still be eligible to reapply for future years, or do you lose?
Well, some of these grants are offsetting. For example, it specifically says if you get a WQIP grant, they might not give you a WEA grant in vice versa. We've done projects where you got both WEA and WQIP. And you can, all our projects are basically, I can't think of anyone, they're all co-funded as the term we use, right? So you have to...
I'm the grant writer for this.
Okay, yeah.
So first of all, if you apply for, first year, do you get the second year? The answer is if you apply for the whole grant at once, you cannot apply for the whole grant and then the second year. If you phase it, like phase one, phase two, phase three, you can get for phase one one year, you get phase two the next year, or whatnot. And you most definitively can apply for the EFC WEA grant and get this grant simultaneously. But if you get awarded, let's say, $100,000 here, and then $50,000 here, the grant that we're talking about, the QIP, gets reduced by the amount of the EFC grant.
I see.
I gotta be honest, I'm concerned, we have a very good relationship with the EFC. So to now have another party reach out there and talk about grants with them, or to talk to our legislatures about SAM grants, I find that to be a confusing message to the people that we've worked years to develop relationships with.
We would only do that in concert with the board. We would never get ahead of the board. And, you know, we probably represent 200 communities and we do this for everyone. It's, we've been doing it a long time. So your concern is absolutely valid, but we know that that's out there, and we would never get ahead of you or the board and make any contact until we agree like that. And make sure that we're doing it in concert with anything that others are doing. Absolutely, it's a good point.
So we would be able to work through that with our grant writer and Delaware?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Your history is only his history, is only tremendous help to everything that we're trying to do here.
Right, okay. So Fred, you mentioned a phased approach versus going for all of it. I mean, what are we...
Well, I don't know the scope of this project. I don't know, like, if it's a project that can, you know, shovel-ready, and then it's done in like six months, I don't really know.
It's not that high, and the total dollar value of this project that we are considering doesn't really lend itself to multi-phases. But we'll know a lot more in, you know, in a few weeks right here.
And there's a strategy to be done, to be considered. Some communities, remember, you have to, you're competing, you're scoring. As we talked with the community yesterday, they were going down the route of solving one of their more critical problems, but not doing the rest of the project. And we found that sometimes what happens is you solve a critical problem, but your users at the end may pay less if you do the whole project rather than doing it by a phase. Because by solving that critical problem as a one-off, you're not scoring as well as you otherwise would for a more comprehensive solution. You think about all of that, and you come up, you work with Fred, you work with the board, and you come up with the best strategy going forward. And that's the way we do it. There's no one-size-fits-all. Once, as Robert said, we get into the project, we'll work with you on that strategy. But all of those things need to be considered. To not consider all those things is naive.
So also, just to bring the board up to speed a little bit, Kyle has come in, Kyle's the operator at a plant from JCO.
Hello.
In regards to the consent order, the upgrades and modifications, like, walked the board through those steps of where we're going and what direction?
Let's see. To explain, like, what we, like, where we walked into versus where the plant needs to go?
Correct.
Okay, so we took over January 2018. We came into a good number of major processes either not being operated effectively or appropriately, or just not operating at all. I know you guys came down to the plant too, we had to plan some of that out.
At the same time while we were under consent?
Yes, so you were under consent order at that time with GHD. They were working on an upgrade project, a plug flow modification project. Basically, that got to 100%, and Wes and I, and then also Rob from Delaware, and D E C itself, really poked holes in the entire project. If you went through it, it still wasn't going to work, and you would have wound up spending money further on down the line. It was really more of like a Band-Aid versus a holistic approach to fixing your problem for the next, hopefully, 20, 30 years is the idea. So now we've entered, you know, JCO's been doing what we can to get that plant down there to pass so the D E C's happy, because they want to see it get to permit. But once you've entered into the consent order, you do have to do an upgrade. So we're gonna have to do an upgrade, but at least right now, we can extend that timeframe out, get the village to make a good, appropriate, you know, reasonable decision, both with the money, that you know you're doing a holistic approach, you're gonna, you're gonna build the right thing for the future, is the idea there.
Seeking grant opportunities?
Yeah, be able to do that, finance it, right?
Developing a comprehensive upgrading modification to the plan? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, really, what we want to do is give the time, instead of this rushed, like, patch job, right? We want to get a good, real foundation to, an appropriate response for the village moving forward, to give you guys time to do that appropriately, to plan appropriately, and to know what you're moving into forward in the future.
And at the same time, I keep, I don't mean to interject, but at the same time, once we get into an upgrade and modification, they do change the permit, D E C?
So that's another very good argument that actually Rob had pointed out, Wes and I had noticed. The permit hasn't changed since the eighties, when that plant was upgraded, eighty-three, eighty-four, well, eighty-two actually is when they probably came out with the permit, then the plant was built eighty-three. As they've gotten more into it, it hasn't come up yet, but we were afraid that, oh, we're gonna do this upgrade, and then they're gonna say, oh, we haven't looked at your permit for 30 years. Okay, we're gonna make those limits more stringent. Oh, we just built the plant on the old permit to meet that only, and not really... Because two things that you could see and would be appropriate, you've been on a phosphorus monitoring limit for 30 years, or, I don't, well, it's been on there, so I'm gonna say 30 years, probably more, like 10, which usually starts the progress to maybe doing phosphorus removal if they feel that's necessary, which is a section of the, it's much cheaper to do now than to try to add on to later. And the other one is your ammonia limits are pretty high for other ammonia limits that are in the states, so 16 in the winter, 5.6 in the summer. Most of other plants that have actually operated are about a 1 to a 2. So you got a little bit, you know, more lax on that. That could always come down, they could decide to do that. So that's just one part of the reason for looking at it holistically and talking to the D E C, because they haven't, and we brought that up to them, and they said, oh, you're right, maybe we should look at that, because that might just be a good reason then for a better...
See, right now, you have a consent order which has deadlines, right? And you have to have real justifiable reasons to extend the timeline, right? So in a conversation with the D E C, was that, you know, we don't want to build something today that you're gonna ask them to modify again, and we need to know the input, we need to, we need that input from them, that you've looked at the report, you've looked at the discharge limits, and there's no changes coming. We need that positive answer.
Can we get that information from the D E C, like, we'll provide it?
Yeah, so that's actually, the letter that we're sending to the D E C to extend the timeline requests, you know, has a built-in factor for them, so they, it's like, we need your, D E C, we need your answer by December, right? And if we don't have your answer in December, then the rest of the things have to slide, all right? Because, like Kyle was saying, that you don't want to build the plant, and then all of a sudden, hey, by the way, you gotta new discharge limits, and what you just spent millions of dollars on, and it's no good, right? So we need to know.
Yeah, the, I don't know if I made it clear either, one of the other concerns for going away from the GHD project, the plug flow project, was, in a meeting with them, they really only thought that the design would be about 10 to 15 years total, but you'd be taking 30-year loans on it, and then paying for an extra 15 years that you're not using it, you're doing another upgrade, and you're taking another loan out. That's what we're trying to avoid with this, is to make sure that whatever you do, it lasts much longer. Because that plant was built in, 1933 is the original parts of the, the main parts of the tank, and then there was a massive upgrade in 1983, and that was the last time really anything has been touched. The UVs have been rebuilt, you guys actually, okay, that second UV that was rebuilt, that was done, and that's made a huge difference, so, you know, it's going in the right direction. I just, I like to see what, I like, I like where we're going with it.
Now, you mentioned that the initial part was built in 1933, and then the last upgrade was eighty-three, so that's 50 years, but you were also saying that we probably would not get 50 years of whatever...
No, 50 years, so that original plant in 1933 was really just like a tank that allowed the stuff to settle into the bottom.
Right.
And there's, that's it. After you settled that out, you clarified it a little bit, and then, yeah, threw it into the river. Later on, they became more stringent with limits, 1983. In the eighties, early eighties, the New York State was giving a lot of grants to upgrade your plants to make them better and to give better effluent. And then, so that's basically what happened there. And then, you know, it's been...
Almost 40 years.
Yeah, it's getting up there.
Right, your new stuff is 40 years old, right?
Almost 40.
This mechanical equipment that works 24/7 in wastewater, right? So it's...
It's done its job, and you've certainly gotten...
Obviously, it's a useful life.
Yeah.
Right, and I get that. Whatever we build, I mean, it just seems, it'd be nice if it can last at least 40 years or something, as opposed to 20 years or something like that.
Yeah. Well, that would be the idea, is to get the maximum you can, at least out of any of the main construction, your wearable parts, your motors, all that stuff. I mean, you got the O and M cost, but the idea is to extend out as far as you can, and...
Then you get the bank to the bottom.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so we're applying for 40%, right? This is, we're trying to get a 40%?
That's likely the category.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is, which is how much, so how much is the...
We haven't established a new dollar value, you know, for the, well, that's the purpose of engineering work, is you need to have a new plan, and that new plan's gotta have a dollar value to it.
Right.
So without, without...
You're hiring us to come up with a plan. Working with Fred, working with Kyle, come up with a plan. And you'll be part of that process. It's an iterative process. We're not gonna come here and lay something on you and say, okay, this is it. I guarantee you, we're gonna come back to you and say, here's some pluses and minuses, here's some different approaches, we think this is, to your point, this is the biggest grant for the buck. And, you know, we'll advance it together.
Going through the process in the last couple of years, what we noticed was that the plans, that the basis of design that was originally crafted and into the final design was not something that was going to work through the village's suffering, and it will all be able to be implemented, I guess.
Well, the E C's straight stop it, yeah.
Right.
Unless you spent more money building new tanks, which wouldn't be terrible, but then it's like, oh, what next, what next, what next? It just needed to be stopped.
So we put the brakes down.
Yeah.
I think the last number that you guys saw was probably in the $9 million range, and it was gonna go beyond that, you know, when the brakes were put on. And then, you know, so, there's another, that's the capital cost, but the previous project also was gonna change the type of treatment, and your electrical, electric bill was gonna go up to some crazy number.
They didn't give me any numbers. See, there was a lot of concern that I had about that, oh, they're more efficient. And we like the air blowers, I have no problem with that, the RON and the BFT, but I wanted to know what that number would be, and I couldn't get it. Like, the mixers that are down there are not very efficient for what they use, but they're a little bit more low energy versus, I didn't say that, they're still 30 horse motors, but, you know, you know what you got here versus what's projected. These are just things that I never saw, that I didn't like, because I didn't, you couldn't plan for what was coming, you couldn't make a decision. The original, not to go back, but just so you guys know the history there, the original basis of design report that was done 2011 or so, which is what is being proposed to be re-gunned, basically, look at, two possible treatment options, which were, one was plug flow, and the other was SBR, which was a sequence batch reactor. The one got shut down and then went with the plug flow. We're already proposing with Rob, looking at at least four of them. At least.
Four options.
At least four options for different reasons. Rob had asked us the other day if we could come up with, you know, four that were, that look good to us, and then with his input, we could do that. Wes actually came up with a very nice list, I haven't gotten to show you yet, I saw it yesterday. They're good options, and they're not just, okay, this, we can, you list everything, you see what you like, then you try to go a little further with that. You were gonna work on getting numbers for each one, or I don't know how that was gonna work, but basically, we, there needs to be a lot more material for you guys to be able to make decisions on than what was there previously.
And it'll come back to user rates. As Rob said, it's a combination of capital and O and M. There are many times, a new plant will spend more money on energy on a new plant than an old plant, because the old plant really wasn't treating wastewater very well. Will treat it to a much, much higher stringent level, but we need to spend some energy doing that. But you will have those pluses and minuses for every option. And then you'll have your capital cost that needs to be amortized along with the grants, along with the O and M cost, along with the connected horsepower, it's all that kind of thing. And we can just say, okay, this makes sense, this is what makes sense for this village and this application. You'll be part of the process. But you need to know all of that to make an informed decision. You can't make the decision just based on capital cost or just based on O and M.
The other thing I think that we're missing is that the cost that we're talking about, the operation of the plant, the treatment and everything else associated with the plant is the environment itself and our discharge, what we're putting back into the environment, which we have to be very aware of.
Exactly.
For all, for the environment itself.
Oh, yeah, that's the ultimate goal of everything that we do, yeah. That's why they build what they build, and we run what we run.
Right.
As far as energy use and all that, is there any chance to recover any of the gas that's being emitted, that I remember this like a flame at the end of the process that just sort of burns it off? Is there any cover that?
We are currently investigating a couple of, well, one specific idea. The gas that's being produced, and this is a touchy subject, we've gone over it a few times, that gas should be able to be recoverable, mathematically, it's there, but the money that you'd have to invest into it at this time to get it to be recoverable, I don't think you're ever making your money back on it. So the thing that we are, you know, Wes and I have looked into this in depth, and then we got Rob's opinion on it too. You know, I could, yes, so basically, I don't think you'll ever make your capital back because it just wasn't...
Right now, it's an energy sink.
Yeah.
Just, we're spending money to produce gas to play on.
Right.
The return on investment is not there.
Yeah.
For a small plant.
Yeah, if you could, if the size was massively increased, you could possibly do it. The idea would have been there originally in eighty-three, it was, yes, but now it's not. What we are investigating is actually not using those digesters so that you're not using the energy there, and then going directly to the gravity thickener, and then pressing out. And if we can meet our requirements that are set forth by the solids waste authority there, you're saving yourself $4,000 a month on just gas costs, not to mention there's two 10 horse motors down there, about four 10 horse motors that circulate that.
And the O and M on running, two digesters.
Greenhouse gases, or they...
I mean, they work very well for what they're doing, but they just use, they use a lot of energy, both gas and electricity. And the idea behind them, the science behind it, is awesome, but it's...
So is that stuff that's being burned off can't be just piped back in and used?
You have to buy another piece of equipment than what you have, and the cost of that would never add up.
So it's not ready to go?
Yeah, you're only doing seven cubic feet a minute. You'd have to pressurize it because it's not enough at that volume to run anything, so then you'd have to do some sort of pressure tank, which we're all kind of like, do we really want to pressurize methane gas on site in the middle of the...
That's dangerous.
So if the technology is there, it could be possible, it just doesn't seem right. And if you want a little more on that, we can certainly talk about it.
And Roger Rockland's not interested in buying that back?
No, it's dirty gas. Methane is dirty. You have to run with...
You have to buy more equipment to clean it up.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if they'd take it even at a minimal price. It just seems, rather than burning it and wasting it, there's fuel there.
We're with you, I agree.
But it costs you energy to make it. You're actually burning natural gas to make that, to keep it warm, to have the right bacteria to make it. We'd be better off just turning the furnace off, raining the temperatures down, using it as a thickener, and save that gas money, that $4,000 a month that you're spending on gas goes away now, just by turning it into a thickener.
The village doesn't pay, which is wonderful about being down here, they do not pay for waste hauling. The village has a dump truck, and they're currently, they have a dumpster that will go in place of that, that has at the end of the press there, and then a room in the back that I think we ended. That goes right to the solids waste authority, you don't pay for it. You know, that's, that's great. However, we can spend the least amount of money so that they'll take it for free.
So we're breaking the BTUs down and burning that off, whereas they could use the BTUs at their solid waste to help dry their process and make it work better, so we're better off just, we're better off just shutting it off.
That's fine, that's fine.
So basically, you're about, you're a treatment plant that's less than 2 million gallons per day. If you just kind of look at the engineering book, you need a treatment plant that's about five MGD.
Okay.
So you're like, you know, several sizes too small to break even, right? So, you know, green energy is great, but the factors aren't there for you to use them here. And it gets complicated, like Kyle was saying.
Thank you.
Okay, so just...
Okay, so just, so going back to plug flow, you said, yeah, that's, the latest estimate we have on that is nine million, we've been talking about nine million cost avoidance by not doing that, but we don't know, I guess until you guys do this report, what the alternate solution is gonna cost.
We'll have five or six options, each one will have a price, we'll project it out over twenty to thirty years and see which one impacts the rates the least and provides the most.
Long-term benefit.
And that's, that's the one we'll pick.
Okay.
And what we'll try to do is use existing infrastructure that you have.
As much as possible.
As much as possible, there's things that we can do down there, there's, I mean, just because the concrete was put in in the thirties doesn't mean it's still not good, it's good, it's heavy.
My sink might be better.
Where we're doing a tank in the village of Millbrook was built nineteen thirty-two, I can't build a tank like that now. They don't make steel that good anymore. It's just, so we're, we're relining it, where, rather than putting in the cheaper versions that last thirty years now, this is a hundred year tank, we're just gonna repaint it and just keep going with it. So, just because it's old doesn't mean it doesn't, it's not good. So we like to use what's existing and what, what we can use down there in the upgrade we're gonna use, makes process sense and cost sense.
All right, so today we're approving.
Amending. We're amending the contract that we already have with Delaware to reflect this, the grant funding opportunity, to engage with DEC, and to make recommendations on the upgrade and modification.
Engineering report.
A facility that can be used for grants.
I did have one more question, you had mentioned that we'd be going for the forty percent grant with sixty percent match by us. You said there was also a seventy-five percent grant, I guess, with a twenty-five percent match, why wouldn't we try to go for that?
Well, the DEC will determine that.
So it's not like we're applying for one or the other, we're just, you're predicting what we'd probably get?
Well, the fact that you have a consent order raises the priority of the project in order to get it done, and in my conversations already with the DEC about it, that we have a very good chance of getting a greater amount of money.
Yeah, the worse shape you're in, it helps it.
Right.
So actually, the greater would be the seventy-five percent grant, I guess, okay, so we might get that, but what more likely you're saying, just from historical?
There's a scoring criteria, and even after that scoring criteria that DEC fills out, then the regional council adds another twenty points, up to twenty points. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of pieces.
I just wanted to understand whether we had to pick one.
No, no.
Okay, great.
How does it work when you work with Fred on this? How does that?
There's a lot of coordination, I mean, Fred can, you know, we'll work together, but, you know, you can explain.
We'll do as much or as little, we'll complement what he's doing.
Our real effort is the engineering report, right, which is, will provide the basis of it. But there's some basic things you have to do, which Fred is much more familiar with you. You have to have a grant gateway account set up, which, you know, so obviously Fred's gotta handle that. Yeah, the new thing this year, the new wrinkle everybody's struggling with is the sexual harassment certification form, so you have to go through that and.
I haven't looked at it yet.
Okay.
Have you looked at this?
Oh, yeah, we've put it out to our communities.
There is a, there is a document, and we, all future, anything that touches state money, that's the village board, and any contracts, like Delaware has to sign the same thing, has to sign a document that says you comply with sexual harassment, you know, policy that, you know, in your state, X, Y, Z.
It's probably gonna be a board of plate form.
It is.
Which many municipalities, you know, will sign. There may be some resolutions involved, but the good thing is it's not due to twenty-six, such that if any resolutions are necessary, we can do them July.
Yeah, we're coordinating with the board, you know, Fred's much more familiar with that, but we just gotta provide the information that's needed to populate the application.
So, you guys have a deadline to meet, that Fred, I guess you're recommending based on how much time you need to then fill out the grant application, this twenty to twenty-sixth of July, so working back.
Well, they may be, probably both of us will have access to the application, so you can populate the fields that you need to populate, and I can populate the ones I need to, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Tax ID number.
Right, right, right. So.
A smart, rote question.
Right, right. So, it's a fluid situation right now, so really, this is the first time I'm meeting with them. So, first dialogue, so we'll flush that out, but you know, we'll get the job done, you know, so, make it happen.
We expect to have the report by the next board meeting?
When is your next board meeting?
Probably not.
Tomorrow.
First week, first Monday, July, right?
July first.
So is that?
Well, the deadline is the twenty-sixth.
Sounds too soon.
The deadline is the twenty-sixth. So it'll have to be before the twenty-sixth.
It's gonna take more time to get even numbers back from contractors and, you know, cost of motors and that kind of stuff, it takes two.
Well, the application will be filed, but we won't have all the detail.
There's, just like everything else, there'll be a report that'll be ready for the application.
Right.
That report will get, will get updated after the fact, also, right? Because we still need the DEC's input on their, on the limits, discharge limits, and there's a bunch of other factors that happen, you know, so. But I'll serve the purpose of the application, and I'll serve the purpose of getting the vote rolling with DEC.
I guarantee there'll be details that follow after the application goes in, but we'll get a, a good application, and then we'll continue to refine that.
And the submission's an annual, right, so that's why it's critical.
Yes, there's a cycle.
The CFA is once a year.
I think it's four o'clock, good.
Yeah, it's four P M.
And we try to get it two days before.
CFA is annual, but you never know if the grant is actually going to be available or falling there unless it's funded actually by the state.
Right, and we were told by our one assemblywoman that the WEA is gonna be funded.
Yeah, yeah. Well, my conversations, that WEA is the EFC grant, which is a twenty-five percent grant.
Right.
Okay, so that has to be funded by, you know, the finance department in Albany, which then will, and the governor makes an announcement, and then the EFC will release it. Now, my conversations all spring, including already last week, early last week, they still plan on releasing that application in June, but there's no guarantee, because it still has not been actually funded yet.
Right, and last year they released it in June, due September.
Right.
So, so basically, you have to have them ready by the time they announce it.
Now, one thing to make you aware of is that we got a number of EFC grants last year, which totaled a little over a million dollars, right around a million dollars. There was one that we, one project we put in for that we did not get, and that was the plug flow, that was the big ticket item, right, the eight million dollar project. So this past spring, we worked, and we, they have an automatic reapplication process, such that we filled out the necessary paperwork, such that when that grant is released in June or July, or whenever it happens to be, that plug flow project automatically gets resubmitted for funding. But from what I'm hearing is, they have the engineering report and everything from the old, the old design, so we're gonna have to work with the EFC and coordinate with the new.
The new.
So it won't be an automatic, I don't know how it's gonna work, when you throw in a new engineering report, it's a totally new project or what, so.
Yeah, we've done that before.
Yeah.
It's the same process you're thinking.
Is it?
So that's what you meant by the politics of it. You can do everything you want, and if money's not released by the state, by federal, it kinda winds your hands.
Or if there's a priority project in your region that's a higher priority for someone.
They'll suck up all the money.
Exactly. I mean, we were worried that some of this, some of these grant programs are gonna be swept for the, for the budget imbalance for New York State. We were worried the governor's gonna sweep those programs, or sweep the SAM program, and that did not happen.
The WEA program, the EFC program, also one of the criteria is median household income of your municipality. We did not receive it the first few years, because that was the mitigating criteria that we fell short, we came so close, but due to our relationship with like Dwight Brown and Mallory, who's no longer there, but Aaron now and whatnot, they realized the importance in our dedication to getting these projects done, that we've built, that's what I'm saying, we've really built these relationships over the years, so I wanna make sure that we continue and moving forward in the right path.
Right.
I think what you'll find is, once you talk to Dwight Brown and say, oh, we're working with Delaware, he's, oh, great.
Okay. The other, the other grant is not income based. There's no criteria, we didn't need some base.
I believe DEC even recognized that we were really looking to move forward, and there, they wanna engage with us too.
Well, when they, when they, when they send an email specifically saying, apply to this grant, you know, you should apply.
Don't get those emails right off.
Right.
And we canceled the workshop in July, which is actually gonna be too late anyway for this, but don't we have to have another special meeting once these guys come back with their report?
For the submit, for the approval?
You possibly will, and we can let you know more about that at your next board meeting.
Okay.
Because then you'd be able to look forward at the next board meeting, unless you're not scheduling it now.
You said.
No, I'm not scheduling it now.
No, because, you know, you said that the next board meeting is probably gonna be too early.
Yeah.
But within a couple of weeks after that, it sounds like we would have to.
Exactly.
So what we'll plan to do is give you an update at your first July board meeting?
Well, unless you wanna reinstitute the workshop for the.
Well, it's still gonna be too late, I think.
Thirtieth.
Don't we have?
Oh, it's the twenty-sixth, I'm sorry.
It's too late anyway.
Right, right, right.
So I was checking over here too, little things.
So, well, I guess then it would have to be another special meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, this is why it's critical that we had this special meeting today, because of the time sensitivity of it, that we need to get it done.
Wasn't my block party?
I just had a quick question.
Here, I thought you were interested.
Wastewater.
Okay, so how does the board feel now we're moving forward? Do you have any other concerns? Michael, do you have any concerns? Charles, do you have any concerns in the back there? Moving forward?
No.
Okay. And the rate for the, for the two in the report is based on?
We've done lots of these, right? So, we know what the effort is, and there was an email that Mary Beth circulated around, it's a typical cost for engineering reports, thirty thousand dollars, you know, plus or minus, but we've already, you know, we've been to your plant, we've studied it, so that's why we can be more efficient with this one.
So this is not to achieve twenty thousand?
Right.
And it's an amendment to the original contract?
Right.
So to that effect.
Oh, there's a, sorry, that interrupted. You were ready to go, and I stopped.
Yeah, we're doing the report.
The amendment also adds the EFC, the requirements that they have for consultants, so which is, which is critical, you know, in terms of the application. They call it the consultant bid packet, but, fifty page document, it has to be in there. That's, that's the only critical piece of the amendment. It's accessorizing our fee and including the terms and conditions.
Which was all reviewed by, by.
Your council.
Village Council. So to that, does anyone have any other questions? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agreement with Delaware Engineering, to engage with DEC under consent order, to seek the grant application, and to change and implement the schedule and the engineering report to DEC. Motion by trustee Alfred Second. Any discussion? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Do we need Delaware for anything else?
Mary, do you have the documents, any signature?
I have to find a document, I don't have the document here, you have a copy of the document.
Yeah.
Let's make copies. Let me finish the meeting, and then we'll do that.
Okay.
How's that sound?
Yeah.
Okay. So I know there's someone here for a block party, and we.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, next, approval for a block party, Mitchell. Mitchell Moe on West Mulberry Avenue, July sixth, ten AM to nine PM. So, is Mitchell, are you Mitchell again?
Here.
Present? So if you wanna, do you wanna present to the board, do you wanna ask for?
No, it's just for the kids.
Okay.
We do a block party, we've been doing it for about four years now, so all the neighbors are getting excited, asking about it, so I figured I'd come here and do it the right way and get a permit.
Okay, so it's Saturday, July sixth, ten AM to nine PM, for all kids and parents to get together in the neighborhood. The idea is to have a fun event for kids, specifically music, barbecued, barbecued food, and some games for the kids. This year, if approved, would be our fifty year old in the block party, we'd like to block off the area below, so it goes from. Wow. Meadow to Ridge on West Mulberry. Do I have a motion?
To approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry for the delay. Have fun at the block party.
Yep. He's excited.
Okay, next is the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery, New York Rising Resolutions. Mike, can you speak to these?
Sure. This relates to the project that we had with, originally with DASNY being the, I guess, the go-between.
Right.
The Governor's Office of Storm Recovery had a three million dollar grant through the New York Rising program, and that was going to be to harden our water and sewer plants against flooding and several damage due to flooding. So, at that time, back in twenty fourteen is when all of this started, they recommended that we use the dormitory authority of the state of New York to be basically the project manager. And Supedat's, they would take the whole thing, they would get the grant funds, they would do the construction, they would have the design of it and everything else, and in the end, they would turn it over to us. And they were all supposed to work within three million dollar grant, and if needed, DASNY had authority to go three hundred thousand dollars above that, that they would absorb in fees to complete the project. A few weeks ago, Charles had an email that went out, and it indicated that the project had been reevaluated in terms of an estimated cost, which was well over three point nine million dollars. And with that, we called for a meeting with DASNY and the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery to meet here to discuss the project and where it would go. I mean, our take on it, at least my take on it, was that we had agreed to a three million dollar not to exceed project, and now because of DASNY fees being increased, the project was going to be in excess of four million dollars in some cases, we're going to absorb nine hundred thousand dollars of that. The other thing that disturbed me about the email was that apparently DASNY wanted us to borrow, you know, to kind of commit to that money, and we didn't have the authority to do so. We didn't authorize borrowing anything over, in effect, any money against that project. And to do so would require us to have that in place, it would take fifty days from the date that the board, village board would adopt it, because you need a thirty day permissive referendum period, followed by a twenty day stoppage period. So, all of that combined, we had this meeting, DASNY did not come to the meeting, Governor's Office was there of storm recovery, and essentially, they told us, we're comfortable at this point with the village doing the financing on its own, to do the grant management on its own, because we have our own grant writer here, we also have the facilities in-house to do it. They did let us know that back in twenty fourteen, based on the village's financial condition, they did not have confidence in the village managing the grant project by itself. So, that has changed. And with that, they said, if you would like to do it, we're, the Governor's Office is actually in very heavy support of us, taking it over and removing DASNY as the middle personnel. Now, just a quick thing, couple of things on that, DASNY has completed some work on that, which they charged, what was it, Charles, $160,000 in fees or something already?
Yes.
On the project, which is gonna be paid out of the grant, so nothing to impact us. But any work that they've done to date, those plans are to be turned over to the village, they become the village's plans. So, for instance, if there was a section of it that was to rebuild something or build something, all those specs and everything are to come to us and at no additional charge. The Governor's Office said that there's still money in the administrative grant costs that can help us to pay for some additional engineering or design, whatever we like, administrative costs associated, and we can charge some of our own staff to those numbers as well. So, it's a plus-plus for us. Again, they mentioned that we were, they were happy with us now, and based on, they're very confident that we can handle it. On top of that, they also expressed displeasure with DASNY on other projects that they've worked on with them and seeing the same pattern. DASNY takes over a project, the next thing you know, the estimated fees of DASNY are far in excess of what they originally estimated, the projects take longer to get done, they don't get them to the satisfaction of the Governor's Office, et cetera. So, with that, they told us to do this, we have to have at least three resolutions, and they're there before you. The first one is adopting an affirmative action program to comply with equal employment opportunity requirements, an executive order 11246. Now, you know, we couldn't find that we had an affirmative action resolution in place, so it's better just to adopt this one. And this is in the recommended language from the Governor's Office, which we did forward to the Village's Council for review. They made one modification, a minor modification on the wording of one of the resolutions. But anyhow, that's the first one, adopting an affirmative action program. The second one is adopting a Section 504, which has to do with disabilities, I believe. And then the third one is amending our procurement policy. We've had a procurement policy in place for several years that we developed. There are a few other paragraphs that the HUD and CDBG would require under these programs. We added those. There are actually paragraphs 15 to 18 on our policy, I don't know if they attach the policy here, but they're not major, they basically say that in our procurement policy, that nobody can be related to somebody who's going to get the business on a project and a few other things. Anyhow, it's going to amend our policy and that's it. The only comment I'll make on these resolutions, there is, on the resolution for affirmative action, paragraph number six, talks about the village's website, we'll put the website address, sufferny.ny.gov in there.
Okay.
So, for that resolution, so Kathy, when it gets finalized, we'll have that in there.
Okay.
But those are, and the last thing is that they said that we have to have a sub-receipient coordinator form. Essentially what this is, for Governor's Office, they require us to identify certain village officials, not by name but by position. So, the equal employment opportunity officer would be the village clerk, because all of the personnel work goes through her office. The Section 3 coordinator, same thing, with the village clerk. MWBE is the Superintendent of Public Works, because most of our contracts, Charles is involved in, when it's required to have the MWBE standards met. Anti-displacement relocation officer, hopefully we never have to run into that, but that's where the village would have to, let's say that they forced people out of their housing, that they'd have to be relocated, but we don't deal with public housing anyway, so we'd have the village clerk in there. Labor compliance officer, that's where, at Superintendent of Public Works, again, to make sure that we get the proper payrolls, the certified payrolls, showing that they're paying the appropriate wages, prevailing wages that are required. And the last two are the village clerk, and that's the Fair Housing Limited English Proficiency Coordinator, again, if it had to do with housing, but the village is not involved in that generally. And a Section 504 that we talked about earlier, that would be the village clerk. So, those are the documents before you and we need resolutions to be adopted on the first three. As soon as we have a copy of the resolution, Kathy, if I can get a certified copy, I can then forward these out to, back to the Governor's Office. One of the quick things, you mentioned EFC and, you know, it was mentioned earlier that we have a very good relationship, Fred had noted that, over the years we've built these relationships with EFC personnel and as well with our elected representatives. One of the things that we've been advised, that has made us very favorable, is our speed at which we respond back to requests from the EFC, and this has happened kinda in strange ways, you know? For instance, we're always very good, as quickly as possible respond back to anything they need, and then one of the grants that we had recently, it was like a 24-hour request, "We need this information by tomorrow," and we had it in there, and that's when a comment came back to us that they were really pleased, you know, pleased, very pleased, that Suffering is one of those communities that responds very quickly to whatever their questions are. And that's all because of the teamwork that we have together, it's Charles, you know, Fred, myself and others, to put this stuff together as quickly as possible. So, again, with these resolutions, as soon as we have the certified copy, we'll send it back.
Another benefit, I know that Governor's Office indicated that there'd be a cost savings to us if we became the sub-receipient?
Yes, definitely.
Around $200,000?
Yeah, well, it's plus, more than $200,000.
More than $200,000.
Actually, what they were referring to was the DASNY fees that were built into the project, and I forget what the original amount was on those fees, it was something, I think the fees are supposed to be around $500,000 or something, but anyhow...
Right.
They were going to be in excess of $750,000, and to date, again, they only spent like $168,000, so we have the difference, and that's worth the savings of $200,000 and some odd thousand.
And all that money will be applied to the project?
That will be applied to the project, yes, and that's where we can recover some of our staff costs working on this?
Yeah.
As well as grant writer costs.
Can we recover, and it's gonna go back to Delaware also, can we recover the attorney's fees also? Do we keep that separated out?
You can, if they're, yes.
If they're associated with the project, with these projects, well, that's a different question.
Yeah.
Because that deals with that project.
Right.
Our bond counsel said that, yes, if it's associated with that project and you had to have legal action taken to preserve the project, that they are, they can be used. Our bond counsel had already provided that.
We're working on several GOZER projects, infrastructure projects, and yes, it's critical with GOZER as you're doing is to identify those potential cost items upfront, so that they're already built into your budget, and they each have a line, and you can allocate costs as they can. And one of the things that GOZER is trying to do now is go to the private sector to have the private sector engineering firms do what DASNY was doing, because DASNY's cost, they're 30, 35% of a project, where if you're on the private sector, it's only 20% of the cost from beginning to end. So, that program, it's a challenging, challenging program. It takes a long time.
Years.
We had a municipal garage that we built in one of our communities, a $2.5 million facility, we had the go-ahead from the community in December, we had vehicles parking in the garage in the first week in November. We have a similar project under the GOZER program, it's been five and a half years and...
No cars parking.
We literally haven't started construction yet. So, be patient and cross all your Ts and dot your Is, as Mike is doing.
But that's why, that's why we are, allows us to divorce ourselves from DASNY. We have to have this in place, it's gotta be reviewed by GOZER. Once they give us the blessing, then we can separate ourselves from DASNY with no further.
And a big, one of the pieces of that, Robert should have the latest and greatest of what, where DASNY was going in terms of hardening, making your facilities more flood resilient. For instance, if part of the project was, and I'm not talking about it, but let's say a part of the project was an elevated generator, well, then it's Robert and Bill are working on your, on this project they were talking about, we know that those costs are gonna be taken care of, we can do something else with that money, so.
Actually, one of the criterias for the WQIB grant is they wanna make sure, if there's any components that are gonna be made resilient for flood, et cetera, that's, you know, that's part of the scoring criteria. It's all intertwined, you know?
Okay. So, there will be coordination with the GOZER grant and you.
There's some opportunities in there that we should definitely take advantage of.
Okay.
Definitely.
So, those will, yeah, that will make money go as far as you can, anyway.
Yeah, the program is a great program, the GOZER program, the concept behind it is great, it's, it would be a more effective program if they essentially made a reverse benefit program where they either forgive the debt that you take on when you're done with the project, like a debt forgiveness kinda situation, or a reverse benefit where they actually just give you the money and then you go spend it. We're using a lot of New York State to administer the program, that's why it takes so long.
Well, initially, I think they wouldn't allow us to be the recipient of the grant because of our situation with the, with the Controller's Office and being that fiscal stress score that we had.
Yes.
So, now they recognize we don't have that fiscal stress, now they're allowing us to divorce ourselves from DASNY and incur that savings.
Good, 'cause it's a, and that's a great move. I would think your actual savings is a lot greater than $200,000, because not only is there a DASNY fee component, but they are designing things the way they like to design things, right? As opposed to an engineering firm that works for you, that is, that is more of a partner with you and there might be more, there's more effective design solutions that are out there. So, I wouldn't think of the savings just in terms of the DASNY, but think of them in terms of the design specifications and so on and so forth. It would be a significant amount of money, the way they're going now, that works out great for you.
All right, so let's move on with these resolutions. Does anyone else have any questions? So, I have the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program Affirmative Action Plan.
It's a...
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Resolution to adopt an affirmative action plan as required under New York State Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Durand, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in motion, pass. Next resolution, adopting the following section 504 policies and agreements procedures for the village of Suffering. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hayden, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Durand, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in motion, pass. Resolution adopting the following procedures and policies for the village of Suffering for the procurement of goods and services necessary for the implementation of projects funded by the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery and of the New York State Housing Trust Fund Corporation. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzmann, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I mean, I would pass it anyway. I'm assuming from what we discussed briefly earlier, that the policy we're adopting is more stringent than whatever we had on, you know, on hand, so to speak, that was previous.
The answer is yes, there's three or four paragraphs that are added that were not in our original one, and it's, they're actually, we have a pretty strict policy now, but this is, it just makes it clear that you can't have a relationship to somebody in a project.
You had mentioned that earlier, I just wanted to make sure, in general, it's more, I hope we're not like watering something else down in exchange for that.
I don't think GOZER is allowed that.
I like what you're saying. I just wanna make sure.
Rest assured.
I just wanted to be 100%, you know, clear with that.
Okay, does the board have any questions in regards to the sub-receipients designated staff members or officials to coordinate compliance?
So, it's just Amy and Charles, right?
It's, yes.
Yeah.
Village clerk and Superintendent of Public Works. And that concludes our special board meeting. You can close.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in. All right, with lengthy. Thank you.